And Greg sent that letter immediately after the meeting to let us know who or what that whole engagement was. I think I still have, I have a copy of that here with me. This environmental assessment, see now. So that's what's happened since we were here, and I was not going to come because we have not addressed all of the issues, but some of the issues do take time to do. The environmental assessment, I think the second comment we had was coming up with a disposal plan. The bank has already completed a phase of environmental study. Prior to the meeting, the last time, we have already completed a phase two environmental study. And that phase two environmental study included the environmental study that was done for the previous development. So it's like thousands of pages long. So all that data is there. Northwest is working with the environmental engineer and coming up with a disposal plan, a plan of action for any soil conditions that would come up through development. They're looking to take care of a lot of the issues pre-development, and then there'll be a plan to deal with those issues during development, should they arise. So all of that disposal plan will be put together and presented to the city or whoever needs to see it prior to constructional starting with that. So I think that takes care of two of the items that were here the last time. The other item was dealing with access to the site and easements. Northwest had done, performed a title search for the parcel and do the surveys. We have a full, alto survey. All the easements and right of ways were identified on the survey and are noted. There is an access easement to that driveway for access off of that roadway. They still have to communicate with the owner, the seller of the property as far as getting an easement to our new storm line and as far as notifying them of the adjustment of the light pole. I was asked, is the light pole even our light, is the light pole, our light pole or theirs? I'm saying, I assume at this point in time that it's their light pole because I assume the restaurant has no power and that light comes on in the building light. So that issue is going to be worked through as well. And I think those were stormwater, parking lot lighting. And then you had asked about, there was a question about traffic and construction traffic, and I think that's all part of that discussion that has to happen.
Exactly.
The back and forth. And that's still, it hasn't quite begun yet. They were spent the last, since we were here last, still working on the interiors of the building to make sure that can move forward. So these issues are being addressed. It's not addressed yet. Another one was bigger picture, and I said that there was an image that was done. This is our bigger picture image. It really just shows the building in context with park itself, but not in context with the neighborhood. That's all that's completed at this point in time. But it really kind of blends itself in, you know, color wise and to the park itself. So, yeah. The next question was building aesthetics. The back of the building was pretty much a blank wall with three windows in it. That elevation's being adjusted and worked on. Actually, that elevation that's in there, it wasn't even done because there's a door missing.
Yeah.
So you picked up on this, Dean?
But I missed the door entrance.
Yeah. So the question is, you know, we're still working through it. There may be sunscreens on the windows that provide, you know, architectural feature. There may be a little canopy over the back door, or there may be recess in the brick. But there'll be, it'll be more than just a blank wall. And we could work through planning as far as what that looks like moving forward, but it's still being addressed at this point in time. And then the last one was additional landscaping against the park. The one thing that I could take care of my own without anybody else. So, and I have these to be handed out. But what we're showing now is that we have this screening around our dumpster, our trash enclosure, which is, the trash enclosure is just two trash cans giving, I don't know if I covered this before, but basically, feel like trash being generated out of here is lunchtime trash because everything else on the other side is shredded in the road through a debris agency. And then between this space here, between the parking spaces in the park, I've placed three junipers, four hydrangea, and six rhododendron, all of which will tolerate the shade in the future. It can survive in the sunlight now, but don't grow to, they'll grow to a height that will kind of screen the bumpers of the cars, you know, three or four feet, but they're not going to get so high that we're going to have security issues with people using the ITMs. So it's going to provide a little more of a barrier where the vehicles are, just right behind the vehicles. You can still see them from the sides, but that, I think it would kind of ease the tension between that bypass lane or the exit lane and the park walkway itself.
I just have just a couple of very quick questions.
Sure.
Okay. Would the, you know, the entrance in the back and the excavation impeded that's going to go on?
Yes.
Could you foresee any problem with, you know, saving the trees that are, that are not going to be taken down?
We lost two trees through this just because of how far into the site they were. These trees that remain, which have, the trees that remain have the solid centers in them. I set the grade back there. So we're only one or two inches above grade, which means we're excavating a couple inches in. We're still preserving a lot of that top root growth of the trees. And we're trying to, I mean, we're 10, 12 feet away from that tree. So, you know, that root, that root structure is based on tree canopy. It's hard to determine that. But I think we're far enough away and disturbing as little of that corner of the root zone that the trees would be okay and survive.
And then in regards to the extension of the drain line?
Yes.
Just a question that there may or may not be D E C involvement. And that, you know, I really want to kind of not even, not even, you know, talk about because that really would be our E H C by.
Right.
It would be their obligation.
Correct.
Or it's a bother. But is there any agreement yet in place for approval for further extension of that? Is it a private D I?
Well, there's, there's two ways to look at this. One is we can do that, or two, we don't have to take our stormwater to that drain. We can grade this so that we don't have to make that connection in the hole. We were making that connection, one is a request, just to kind of clean up some water on site as far as, you know, what would have to traverse, and we can make adjustments to that. And two, we pick up the down spots in the roof drains underground versus going above ground. But we can eliminate that stormline and connection if this becomes an issue.
I think preferable for everybody concerned would be to make the connection.
Correct.
Provided that there isn't a huge delay in project timing and a huge outpouring, you know, of approvals through a D E C, you know, and if it doesn't connect in there, if they're pretty confident, would the drainage plan, would that be removed that it's not going to create?
The only, the only concern that was brought up to us is we've created a vegetative strip here between the drive-through bypass and the existing parking lot. The concern would go out that is water going to sit behind that and create a puddle. And I think we can still, we could adjust grades so that it's flatter across the drive-through lanes to create more of a positive slope across that green space to make sure the water doesn't get trapped back there. And that's why the, that's why the whole thing really came up is there was concern about that water being trapped behind the grass. So I think we still have some little room for adjustment and grade back there to even eliminate that concern.
Okay. So that's all I got.
Any other thoughts coming?
You have any questions? No.
Is there a motion to, a question to execute?
Yeah, I've got a question.
No problem.
Where does this connect to, from the looks of this South Main Street?
What do you mean, where is what connected?
This end. How close to the bridge is it?
The bridge is like right in here.
It is?
The bridge, this is, this is the walkway coming down into the park. So I think the bridge is more like up in, up in this area.
Further.
I think so.
Well, again, the river is way back here.
Right. And there is, there, there was a, you know, provision that we couldn't develop within 30 feet, I think in this overlay district, within 30 feet of the river, which doesn't even hit our property line, I think. So we're still 35 feet plus to the river here. And then if you, you know, kind of just project out line, I think the bridge really kind of sits up.
So this is 35 feet to the river?
Yeah.
From this river?
Yeah.
All right. So the bridge is 35 feet, because that's a pretty straight path.
Do you go store that I gather, sit right here?
No, no, stores on the other side.
Over here?
Yeah.
Over here?
Yep.
So at present, then, what we'd be looking at is, you know, basically?
It's going to be quite close to the river.
We're actually farther away from the river than the building is now.
But it would be behind, or go stores out here, you'll be like over here with the river behind you. But it would be no closer than the existing wall?
Correct.
Yeah, I think the drawings I had before, I had, and I can, I have the reduced version. We actually pulled the building away from the river and back into the site from where it sits now. So we've kind of relieved that vertical, we were looking at that vertical planes relationship to the park itself. Even though we have vehicle of traffic between those two now, where we don't, closed, if we don't now, the building moved back. Because I think it'll feel a little more open than it does.
This is Seacrest, and that's the river right there. So this is their parking lot. And that's the.
He beat me to Google.
So that's the river there.
Google Earth is your friend these days.
Exactly.
So they're saying it's 35 feet from their property line to the river.
Honestly, if we do the Google, the country and it kind of.
That's the river.
Visually, as you're coming down South Main Street, visually, as you're coming down South Main Street, just by the nature of this property location, it does sit in front of everything else, but not any further than it does right now. But it's also behind a monument sign. I mean, this monument sign, there's just a whole pile of things going on as you're coming down the street.
I think that we're all excited about it and enthused about it. It's going to be a vast improvement over what is currently there. And, you know, kind of in advance, I did want to speak that as you may grow and only, I ask a lot of questions. And, you know, it's not out of, you know, trying to tie anybody in knots or gotcha questions. It's so I can understand what, what the project is and what you're looking at doing.
So we're all kind of stuck by what our experiences have been in life. Those are the things that lead to what we want to know about when we see things.
So I. So is there a motion to approve the site plan?
I would like to propose a motion to approve the site plan as presented with the addition of the final landscaping plan that was submitted today, along with one condition.
Correct.
And that would be if the project goes forward with the drain line extension. It would be receipt of any external approvals needed for extension of stormwater drain in drawing C 104, titled grading plan, extending from Taz parcel 387.49-1-2 into and connecting to an existing drain inlet on Taz parcel 387.49-1-4.1. And that's only if you continue with, with that original grading plan and the connection in there. It's just so that we know that you have the approvals of, of the current property owner.
Right.
And that it's his responsibility or their responsibility to obtain the proper approvals from any state authority to do it.
Does it matter to us?
I believe that it would, because if.
If they say no, then it's still.
If we, if they say no, then that condition is moot.
Right.
If they, if, if you, if they continue and want to place the D I, place the drain extension and connect to the existing D I, and we don't, and we grant the approval without the condition, then it would be as if planning commission is approving construction, whether at grade below or, you know, above grade, on somebody else's property without their, without their approval and knowledge. That's it. That's the only thing that's holding me back is that if there were a municipal drain, D I, and the municipality had, had an easement to the property for connection into it, then I think that the city would have, would be able to say, yeah, that's okay. And is Ellie, Ellie is not here, is he?
Well, I, I would approach it from, I understand where you're coming from, but I would also approach from the fact that this entire site drains to that D I anyway. So we're not adding more water into the system that's already there. It's just how it's conveyed. So it's not like we are taking our water and putting it through a new system through their property to get to the discharge point. It's already built there.
Yeah.
But I, you want us to make sure that if we do go the route of putting, of connecting with, to that inlet, that's, one, we have an easement to get to that inlet, and the owner, the property owners aware of what water is coming in there.
Correct. And that's all. It would be like Mike, if the property next to you was doing an addition, and you've got a, and you've got a storm drain in your parking lot, it would be as if the planning commission approving their site plan and also authorizing them to excavate onto your, into your parking lot and connect to your D I.
Planning commission doesn't authorize that, though.
Yeah.
That goes through the permitting process.
So even if we said yes, you couldn't do it anyhow?
I just want to make sure that we're not.
We'll, we'll work with engineering as far as that connection goes. If this was, if that was a public utility out there, then we wouldn't need anything. We could just connect to it.
Exactly.
But it's the fact that we're crossing private property to connect to it, even if the water's over there. And I think that's what we would work with engineering on as far as making sure that all those easements and right of ways are associated with that and the stormwater conveyance is properly taken care of.
When we're taking it for the right of way permits to your parking lot or anything, we would make sure that they have.
Okay. So, so you're comfortable with that, then, Mark? Okay, then I would, I would, I would like to amend the motion to remove the, the one condition. And just go with a, an approval motion to approve the, the project as presented inclusive of the final landscaping plan.
I'll second.
You for the discussion?
Favor?
You oppose?
Also, thank you.
I think it surprised me down there this morning, having to stop on the site.
Yes.
And, here, just trying to make sure I understood where properties are owned by different entities in here. But during that time when I stopped, this was about 10 o'clock, that entire, everything that was blacked out there had a car on it.
Yep.
I've never seen it so packed with cars. It was hard to understand how they could do any business at the hospital building that they're in, or at the pharmacy. It was so packed. Made me think, holy cow. I wonder if you asked a question without, before, why, what, we needed to know what, what you didn't do.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you for your, by the way.
Thank you, Rick.
It's going to be nice to see you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to move on to another topic, which is, as the new chair, I just wanted to take a few minutes. I have 19 slides, so just hang in there. But just to go through sort of my understanding of the planning commission, make sure that we're all sort of on the same page as we move forward. This is a living document. It's meant to be changed. It's meant for us to work together. And I want to make sure that we're all willing and able to do that. So the planning commission consists of seven members. I think we all know that. I think we're all here today, except for Ron.
Ryan's not here.
Ryan's not here. And then Mayor Ekman also appoints two people. And that's how we're all get, we all get here. Our two primary functions are firstly, as the recommending body for long-range planning. This is something that we've had a hard time doing before. And it's just right after COVID and sort of restructuring, you know, it's challenging. Going forward, we're redoing the comprehensive plan zoning. So it's a really good opportunity for us to work with the Department of Development to do this. The second is to serve as the approving authority for site plan reviews, which is what we just did. Most of us who've been here know that this is primarily what we do. We tend to be more reactive, and we're not quite as proactive as we tend to be. But hopefully going forward, we will try to push that a little bit more. So, and as, this is something I wanted to keep just in the back of my mind, that we are updating comprehensive planning and zoning. And we, the city hired a company to help do this. And so what I have in here is not formally adopted by anyone. But I'm hoping that as we work through this, that we can sort of help guide the comprehensive plan and the function of the planning commission to support updating the comprehensive plan and zoning. So the communication procedures, and this mainly refers to site plan review. And a lot of this is my own input on just how, you know, I would, I'd like things to try to flow to make it easier for us and to make it easier for the applicants. Just being in business, it's hard for me when I get multiple things coming from multiple people. So I really want to try to have one point of contact, and that is going to be Ellen. It's probably will be rare that I actually email an applicant directly and bypass her. But I'd really like most of the communication to come from Ellen to city staff and to the applicants. So the site plan application procedures. So they're going to have a preliminary application or meeting with Ellen and with the city staff. They have to complete the site plan review application and submit it to the city. And the ongoing communication between the site plan review applicants and the city is encouraged, and it's going to be a dialogue, and it's going to continue throughout the whole process. And upon city staff level approval, the application can proceed to the commission. I really want to try to avoid applicants coming to the commission where they intend to have something approved and it's not approved by the staff level. And then we end up kicking it back to them and then having to come back to the commission. If they want to have a work session, that's something I think we should encourage them to do. But I don't want to going back and forth with the expectations of it being approved and then having not be able to be approved and having to go to a work session. This is right on the city's website. So if anybody goes right to the city, they can locate this. And this is the application for the site plan review. And it's a simple form. And I think a couple meetings ago, somebody asked if this, if they could fill this out online and submit it, which is a great idea. I don't see that function yet. But hopefully, as we get more technology, we'll be able to print it out or fill it out there and email it back, whatever's easier for them. Also on the city website is a complete breakdown of the process on what the applicants are expected to do. And I think this is really good for applicants. They know what they need to do as soon as they go to the city website. And then this is just a continuation with a checklist of things that they need to complete before they submit to the planning commission. And then the meeting procedures, this is if we're not expected to have a vote, they can present the projects that are not being voted on. And an application, applicant should submit material to Ellen, the principal planner, who will send the commission the work for all of us for review. And then the commission members can review the project and submit questions back to Ellen, back to the principal planner. And my thought for this is if we're all emailing Ellen, she can take everything, and she can compile it and say, you know, four people asked a similar question. Let me just take this and simplify it and send it out to the appropriate staff. Because some of these questions may go to the applicant, some of them may go to city staff, depending on who has the knowledge of the products, of the project. And then when we're in a work session, if everything is all set and we can vote, you know, I have no problem with changing it and just saying, we can vote on this project to keep the project moving along. We don't want to delay the project if we're satisfied, the staff is satisfied, satisfied, let's just move ahead along.
Is there anything that would be required, say like with work sessions? Do they come under the same open meetings law and if we're going to vote down something?
Yes, it would still be, it would still, everything would still be.
So if we're going to vote down something, it has to be publicized?
Everything, every meeting will be publicized. And if it's a work session, it will be on there.
But are we allowed to switch from a work session to a voting session under open meetings law?
I don't know.
I would say yes or something. If the fence, you've been doing that.
Okay.
You know, obviously during sale of property or discussions like that, there's specific requirements, like house laws to make that we would have any connections of. But I would advise you or myself or another staff member.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Site plan procedures to vote. This is when, you know, we're going to require that the applicants complete the application 14 days prior to the meeting. And so that Ellen has it at least 14 days, so the applicants know they want to vote on this. We need, we need information 14 days prior. And this is after the staff level approval. So the staff, by this point, the staff has already signed off on it. They're good to go. And then it's going to come to the planning commission. So the planning commission will get this information 14 days prior. We have seven days to review this, to get it back, to get our questions back to Ellen, so she can get them back to either the staff or the applicant. I think a lot of the stuff can be worked out with an email going directly to Ellen instead of coming here and having a meeting and going through all this work. It's not necessary. And we can just sort of bypass that, and it'll be easier on the applicant because they'll have time to get the information they need back to city staff or back to the planning commission members. And then from there, everything will be disseminated back to the principal, by the principal planner, so that we'll have all their responses, so that we can ask follow-up questions if needed. And then after they receive all of our responses and questions, the applicant can still choose to continue the site plan review, to vote, you know, change it to a work session. Maybe they say, okay, this is going to take more time, you know, then we need to have a further discussion of this. Or they can ask to postpone it. And I believe that's asking writing to postpone it. And then we can just wait and go back to it at a later time. But that would give us all back in their court, so that we're not delaying them. It doesn't appear that we're delaying anybody. And they have time to get us the answers that we need. Voting session procedures. So I will introduce the project, which we just did. The commissioners will write a checklist regarding the purpose or the purview of the evaluation. And Ellen's working on this, so that we can all have a checklist to make sure that they met all the requirements that they need to make. And it would be either approve with or without conditions, deny with or without conditions, or table with or without conditions. And the commissioner making the motion should always say what the reason for the motion is. So if we are going to table something, it's in the record that we know why we're tabling it. And then we check, and no seconding is required. Once somebody makes a motion, we can vote. If it passes, great. If it fails, then we have more work to do. Some of those conditions, you know, we could be in the middle of a discussion, and something changes, and we need more staff level, you know, input. So we might have to wait for staff level. Variance requests, we can approve upon waiting for a variance request. Design elements, public safety. So there's a variety of things that we could still, the project could still continue moving forward, you know, but there may be conditions out there. Some approval components, you know, they could include like the state environmental quality review, site plan that we just did. There could be others, you know, right along the Shadouquan River and stuff. So there may be other things that we need in order to. we need in order to approve a site plan, just to keep those. Some things that we can exclude, permitting, transfer property, easements, variances. Things that even if we approve a site plan, they're still bound by other codes, um, and regulations. Just because we approve a site plan does not mean that they can, or somebody can ignore or bypass other codes, um, for the gallons. They're, they're still bound by them. And then, you know, state environmental quality review. And this is just to make sure that there is no, um, nothing that is gonna negatively impact the environment. Um, if there is something that's gonna negatively impact the environment, there's other, it's a positive declaration. And then we just have to, you know, work around that. You know, a negative declaration is the action is not going to negatively impact the environment. And most of the time, that's about, you know, what it is. Once in a while, there's something else, but, um, and this was through our, you know, one of the trainings that we did, and there's just different types. For the state develop, the state environmental quality review, um, process. Most of ours are like unlisted stuff that we're doing. And most of the time, it's a negative declaration. They're not gonna negatively impact the environment. Um, and that's that big form that we got even from Northwest that has, you know, are you, how, are you from wetlands? Is there any endangered species? And it's a whole um form that they have to fill out, and that goes, comes back with their application and with their paperwork for the project. Training, we're required by state law, you have four hours of training. All site training and stuff does count towards this requirement. Right now, I'm working with Ellen to try to get some onsite training here. Um, I personally like group, group dynamics. I like trainings, group chat discussions. Some of the state ones and some of the other ones that we've done where you're just in front of a computer, listening to somebody, it's hard for me to follow that, um, and it's hard to engage, so I would much rather have training here. You know, and we're all members of the New York Planning Federation, so I'm sure you're getting their emails and all their training and stuff. You know, I'm not gonna forward you training because it's your own responsibility to do the training. But the in-house training is something that we're working on. And then, you know, I do want to thank all the staff. Um, if Mayor Ekman was here, I would have had your picture in there too. You know, and the, the staff here at the, the city is, is phenomenal. You know, so I lean on them for everything. So if there's ever questions, if there's ever, um, dialogue that needs to be had, just reach out to them. And these are, I mean, you're all experts in your field and, um, you know, I'm just really glad that you're here helping. When I first started on the planning commission, you know, there was, it was, everything was in transition. Crystal wasn't here, Ellen wasn't here. It was, you know, I had three meetings before COVID. It was a mess. And we still got a lot done, but this is much nicer if they have everyone here, uh, working together, so, um, so thank you for all the staff. And then I also want to thank all, everyone else on the commission, um, because you're all volunteers here. And it's really hard work volunteering in government. Everyone has a better idea than you and they're always willing to, to let you know, so it's. So donating your time and talents and knowledge really brings a lot to not just the commission, but to the city and the community as a whole. Um, and I do think everything that we do here helps the, the city, um, and it helps the residents and the businesses and everything that supports the people who, who live here. So I want to, so thank you for, for being here and being willing to, to volunteer and, and to help. And I also think it's a good opportunity now, um, for on your own time to sort of critique the planning commission. And look at it through the eyes of a prospective applicant. Go to the website, you know, look at all the, the minutes, um, see if it's easy to get information. You know, see if like, you know, well, maybe these files should be in a different location. Some of that stuff is easy to move and make it easier for, um, applicants to, to get information. But it's just nice for you to be able to, if somebody asks you, you can say, well, yes, you go to the Department of Development and click on their tab, and then on the bottom, that's where the files are that you need. So it's just a good resource to have, and it's also a good time to look at things through a fresh set of eyes. I know that I will walk past the same thing ten times and not notice it. And so it's nice when somebody else comes in with a different perspective, just sort of look at things and say, oh, wait, you know, can we do it this way? Maybe we can't, but it's, it's worth the opportunity. And so going forward, you know, I really would like to try to be more proactive with the planning commission. Um, I'd like for us to, to push a little bit more, uh, to see if we can think outside the box on, you know, what are we missing? What can we do, uh, to try to add neighborhood revitalization, to add stability, to add, um, you know, more business, anything that we can think of. And we can reach out to people and get guest speakers in here who are experts in, in their area and say, what can Jamestown do to really, you know, to benefit from this program? And if it was easy, it would have been done. And so it's, you know, it's a challenging thing to do, but, but we're in a situation where we can do it, and now we're updating the comprehensive plan and we're updating some of the zoning, so it's a good opportunity for us to reevaluate some of this. And that's all that I have. So thank you.
I'll just add that, um, Joe Calmary, um, the mayor's executive assistant just revamped the city website. So welcome to take a look and peruse around the Department of Development page. If you feel like there's anything missing, um, please let us know that, but it's so much more organized and easier to use now. Um, so I hope that you find that it, that that's true.
I looked up this, this morning and it was simple.
Yeah.
When the minutes were all there, the, the video archives were all there, and it was.
It was searchable.
Yes, it was very simple. It was, it was nice.
Yeah.
It was easy to do.
I won't say it's completely, you know, our site isn't completely done. I think there's a few other resources that we certainly can add, but
It's much better than.
It's much more cleaned up and much more.
Use your family for sure.
Yeah.
So just a, just a quick question, Crystal, as, as you go through the comp planning and maybe perhaps maybe to make it easier for, uh, for applicants, uh, that are going, they may have to go through a secret process.
Mm-hmm.
Has it, has there been any thought given to adding to the list of current type two activities that would not require a, uh, environmental review?
No, not at this point. We, we just started the comp plan, but as far as, is changing that? No, that's not a discussion that we had at this point.
Okay, I, I was just curious, because I know you, you are allowed to add, you know, activities that would not fall under the, the, um, environmental review process.
Um, I think that that's something that we should, we can look at as we start to really dive into the comp plan. Um, and we start to look at our zoning. It's, it's definitely something to, to, um, streamline the process, which is something that we all, I think we all want, right? I mean, that's, that's kind of the purpose of your presentation and, um, in redoing the website, getting us kind of to a, a fresh place. Ellen's developing the checklist for you, so any opportunity that we have to streamline processes uh and make it easier for development to happen, we want to make sure that we're, we're doing that and we're making, um, it easy to live and do business in the city, so.
Yeah, I, I get the idea, but are we still bound by certain state regulations?
Well, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So, so in that, the state, we can, I, I assume there's an application process that we would have to go through to be able to establish that.
This is great. This is going. I'm gonna be honest about this. Years, go back twenty, thirty years, planning commission most often was acting like what now Crystal has been trying to return. So you weren't here to see it, but, uh, it, it makes a big difference. Everything that's been said is important in this whole time of trying to develop things to a better position. So it's good. Made me feel really good sitting here as an old timer in this.
All right, and I don't think we have any public comments tonight?
Nope.
Um, my one lesson, meetings, like my goal was like one hour max. I maxed out after an hour, so that's, um, on the agenda. If I think it's gonna be more than an hour, something's not gonna be on the agenda. It's, it's gonna be an hour, um, but that's, that's my only thing.
I just have one other comment. Uh, we do have a celebrity amongst us. I believe that our corporation counsel, Elliot Ramondo.
Yeah.
That is now a member of the U.S. Supreme Court bar. Congratulations.
Quite an accomplishment.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And Mike, thank you for putting this together. It's fun. Really appreciate it.
Okay. It's a nice template. Really well done. All right, meetings adjourned.
Thank you.